Going to ask everybody to please stand so I can salute the flag.
The President, it is from the pride of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Counselor Brown.
President.
Counselor Judy Garcia.
Present.
Counselor Tenere Garcia.
Present.
Counselor Lopez.
Here.
Counselor Robinson.
Here.
Counselor Recupero. Counselor Vidal. Counselor DeJesus. Counselor Hattlerberg.
Here.
Counselor Melinda Vega. Counselor Taylor.
Here.
Name of his present, two absent. Mr. Chairman, you have a call. I have a call. At this time, I'll recognize Counselor Hattlerberg.
Sure, I wanted to ask, under suspension, if there are no objections, if we could pull the Subcommittee report from the Special Subcommittee to appoint the City Manager Selection Committee out of order, if that's acceptable.
Cool. So moved. You have the floor, Counselor.
I'd make a motion that we accept the recommendation of the committee by a roll call vote, and I would speak on it briefly.
You have the floor, Counselor.
Sure. So, I wanted to thank the members of the Selection Committee who were able to attend tonight. We really appreciate your attendance there. For the public, we were at the stage of the City Manager Selection Process where we had our own Subcommittee to select members of the Selection Committee, which essentially is going to filter through resumes. We have, Gino Flaherty has agreed to chair it, which we really appreciate. And then, we had about 25 members of the community apply to be involved and read their names out last meeting. The four that we have selected are Fidel Maltese, Joan Cromwell, Michelle Nadal, and Juan Vega. Fidel was unable to attend this meeting. He's at a meeting on trash in Reading. And Joan also had a personal situation that she was unable to attend at this time. But Michelle and Juan are here. We want to thank you for your attendance. We also named two alternates in the event that someone is unable to attend. Jennifer Hassel and Jonathan Gomez Pereira will be the two alternates. So, again, thank you very much. Really appreciate your involvement.
And also, back on February 27th, I named Gino Flaherty to be the Chair of the Committee, and we voted 9-0. We had two absent for him to be the Chairperson. Chair recognizes Counselor Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to just thank, again, the candidates for being on the steering committee. Those is here tonight. Again, as Council Chairman stated, we had a lot of residents that was very interested in putting their names in, and we had some heated debate. And we believe that we've come up with a great combination of folks from our community involvement to really help us get through this very, very difficult and very serious business. So I'm grateful that you folks are here tonight. I know you're going to have a lot of nights before you, reading resumes, searching through resumes. But we are entrusted in you that you will make the best decision for the residents of Chelsea to put some great candidates before the City Counselor, where we officially have the vote, the vote on those candidates. So, thank you all again, and for those members not here, if you're listening, thank you too. Thank you, Mr. President.
Counselor Vidal.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just, for the public, I just want to kind of give an idea of what's happening. So, I too was also part of the Selection Committee that helped select the four members of the Selection Committee. And so, we've been meeting with the Collins Center. The Collins Center is facilitating the City Manager Process. And they've been making appointments and meeting with each of the City Councilors to find out what our priorities are and what we're looking in a City Manager. They will then take that information, create a profile that will help the Steering Committee to help guide them in the search of a City Manager. They would be responsible for interviewing the applicants for City Manager, and then will be responsible with giving us a couple, and then ultimately, we will make the final decision where there will be community input. And so, that information and all that process is still to be determined, but up until now, that's what's happening. So I just wanted to thank the members of the Steering Committee for being involved, for wanting to be a part of this process, and I'm looking forward to working with you all and see what we can come up with and hopefully get a City Manager that can carry our values in the future. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other Counselor? Seeing none, I'd ask the clerk and everybody to come forward so she can swear you in.
You want a roll call?
Want a roll call. After the roll call. Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Counselor Judy Garcia.
Yes.
Counselor Tenere Garcia.
Yes.
Counselor Lopez.
Yes.
Counselor Robinson.
Yes.
Counselor Ray Coopero. Counselor Vidal.
Yes.
Counselor DeJesus. Absent Counselor Hattlerberg.
Yes.
Counselor Melinda Vega. Absent Counselor Taylor.
Yes.
Nine in favor and none opposed. Motion adopted. They're all affirmed. Okay.
Congratulations.
Ask the City Clerk to come forward and do your duties.
Aye. Do solemnly swear. And affirm. That I will faithfully. And impartially. Perform all the duties. And coming upon me. As a member. Of the City Manager Steering Committee. According to the best. And my abilities. And understanding. Agreeably. To the rules and regulations. Of the Constitution. And the laws of the Commonwealth. The Charter. And the ordinances. Of the City of Chelsea. So help me God.
We have the continued public hearing.
We have a continued public hearing in regards to the CIP. Does anybody want to speak on the Capital Improvement Plan? Seeing none, we'll close that portion of the meeting. Any member in understanding? Anyone here for public speaking? Take the... State your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Teresa Cherebega, 21 Prospect Ave. So, I'm here. Actually, it's been years since I've been talking about this subject. When I discuss the Counsel Recupero proposal for evacuation routes. Okay, that's something that I've been asking since three managers ago. So that's been many years. Last time I was up here asking about, what's the evacuation route? The answer I received, "We'll let you know during the emergency." And my question is, how the heck are you going to do that when your 911, reverse 911, isn't going to work? You don't have my cellphone. You can't get to my house because it's probably, lines are down. So, basically, how are you going to let us know? And every time, oh yeah, it's a secret, which means you have nothing. You have nothing about, you know, no evacuation route. And I don't know if the city ever came up with any kind of emergency plan for the city. If you go to Boston, those evacuation routes are marked on the city streets. You can see the signs. In Chelsea, there isn't anything. There is no, any kind of a plan that I can find on the city websites that says, if there is an issue, where do you go to if your house is cold, you know, and you don't have lights, you don't have heat? Where do you go? You can't call anybody because you can't reach them. Your cellphone, you know, cellphone reception, it doesn't work. And if it does, emergency management people would get the first crack at reaching anybody, so they're not going to call you. So we need that ahead of time. So, I'm basically congratulating Recupero, saying to bring this up and hopefully get this thing done. Just to let you know, there is a program, and this is my hat from City of Quincy. So about a year ago, in September, I took a class and started, this is actually twice. So there is a program, Community Emergency Response Team. And it's a training session. It started out in California years ago. And this is to train regular citizens to assist emergency management people in case of real emergency. Because if something happens, there's not enough emergency people to, you know, to help out. So this is a program, tells you how to do that. And I've taken this twice, and mostly for my own personal, because at least I know what to do, how to turn off the gas. Especially, you know, if you have a house and there's an emergency, you should know how to turn off the gas and how to secure your house for emergency. So we need to do that. Years ago, we had basically an emergency management person that would tell me, "Oh, we're going to tell you later," because he didn't have any plans. He had no experience in emergency management. Currently, we do have someone who has actually FEMA experience. I'm not sure about doing a cert class. When I talked to him about a year ago, he was going to do a cert class for the City of Chelsea. I'm not sure how that...
One minute, Teresa.
All right, so just...
One minute.
So, just basically suggesting that you should develop a plan and post it, and especially, where do you go to in case of emergency? Not everybody can drive, so they need to be able to walk in case there's an emergency. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Gary DeYoung, 165 Witten Simmons Street. Typically, when I'm here, I'm speaking on behalf of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board. Tonight, I'm here as a taxpayer, homeowner, and to be frank, kind of a frustrated one. My interactions with the city have been challenging, and to a certain degree, I would say harmful. To give three quick examples, we've done major basement work at my building. It's a 12-unit building. It's in very bad shape. Years ago, it's been slowly kind of been on the mend. Next step was doing some structural work, brickwork in our basement. We did the first phase of the structural work. We called the inspector to have it inspected. Took a rather long time to get them there, or to even get a response. But we did. They were very helpful when they arrived, and they wrote us a letter saying we need to put up a new ceiling, which we knew. And on the bottom of that letter, it said, I forget what the, there's boilerplate language, you know, "You're hereby ordered to follow my lawful order," and they tell you some things that'll happen if you don't do what they tell you to do. And it struck me as kind of ironic, because we've been trying to call this person for months, and here he is telling me that, you know, this thing's going to happen, that thing's going to happen, if I don't do what he's telling me to do, but he won't show up at my place. Sure enough, we put up the ceiling. We called him for two months. Nothing. Nothing. Not a phone call, not an email, nothing. It's pretty frustrating. Around that same time, this was probably late February, I'd realized that I, this will sound separate, but you see how it connects. I'd received an email regarding parking permits. I did my application online as requested. And late February, I realized, you know, we're going to have to replace these pretty soon, but I haven't gotten anything. So I called. I'm also, was planning to leave town at that point, so my car was going to be on the road for a week, and, you know, I needed to know that it wasn't going to be ticketed. So I called the City Clerk's office, you know, asked what the situation was. The woman was very helpful, very nice, but basically, the situation was, I don't know what the situation is. There's nothing we can do to fix it. You're probably going to have to come back here and stand in line anyway, and since you're leaving, you're going to get all these tickets. You need to appeal. I want you to think about how absurd it is to have to ask a city to not have to pay for its mistake. That makes no sense. Now, I have to give some credit. I am on a board, of course, with the interim City Manager. I do thank him for his assistance for that situation. And with the housing inspector situation, after all this happened, I went to go speak with him about it, and it was corrected the very next day, which, again, I'm grateful for the assistance, but if it could be corrected so fast, it didn't have to come up in the first place. So, that was kind of thing number one. And two, I did go on my trip. I did come back. There were not tickets on my car, because fortunately, the permit did show up on time, but I parked it in one spot for a week where I knew it would be legal, hopefully safe. So I go back shortly after coming back home, check on it, make sure it's okay. It is. No signs up saying, you know, "Road street work," or "Pill zone," or anything like that. I happened to run by it the next day, just circumstance. Well, there's a backhoe there. It's tearing up the street. My car's gone. No notification, nothing. This happened to be a day where I had to go on any number of high stakes, critical obligations in my life, and instead, I'm going to the police station, I'm going to the discos, I'm finding the ATM, I'm getting my car out of hock, all for the city's mistake, not mine. I'm forgiving the mistakes. I make my own, but when there are this many, there are this high stakes, they're having this level of impact, I'm sorry, I cannot give up four hours of my day and lend the city 150 bucks because it couldn't put a sign up. I can't afford to do that. So at some point, you got to draw the line and say enough is enough. And I'm saying, as a City Council, you are the Board of Directors. You are the ones keeping, giving the oversight, making sure that what needs to happen is happening. And what I'm saying is, unfortunately, it is not happening, and we need you to look into it. I don't know where the problem is. I don't have the capacity to find out right now, but I ask you to look into it, and it just has to be solved. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Seeing none, we'll close that portion of the meeting. Next order.
The next order was the approval of the minutes, regular meeting, March 20, 2023.
Calvin Brown moves to accept and file a communication. The minutes under suspension. See no objections. So moved.
We now move on to communications from the City Manager. We don't have any. We have communications and petitions to the Council. The communication, we have a copy of a communication received from the Parent Professional Advocacy League to proclaim children's mental health week 2023.
Counselor Taylor moves to accept and file a communication in May. I'll be putting the proclamation forward. Yeah, right.
Yeah. They sent it early. Okay, let's go down to committee reports. We already had the one from Brian, and now we have a copy of a communication received from DeMali Vidal with regards to the City Clerk position. The Subcommittee for the City Council Clerk has concluded with the interview process. We recommend Clifford Cunningham for the position of City Council Clerk with a starting salary of $54,819.06. The conditions of disposition are as follows: 12-month probation every period, six months to enroll and complete an online parliamentary course. If approved, you will have a start date of April 3rd.
Chair recognizes Counselor Vidal.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to adopt by roll call vote, but at first, I'd like to offer the amendment.
Yes.
I'd like to amend where it says, under the second bullet point, six months to enroll and complete. Also, I need that to include language that says, "to pass with a C average," which is at least a 70 or above.
Yep, correct. It has to be at least 70.
Correct. And then, move for a roll call vote. I'd like to speak on it briefly.
You have the floor, Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I want to thank Mr. President for allowing me to serve as Chairperson of this Subcommittee, along with Counselor Taylor, Counselor Recupero, and Counselor Norielis DeJesus. We were, as folks know, our beloved City Council Clerk is leaving, and we were really in a crunch trying to fill his position. And we were fortunate enough to be able to find someone, a former City Councilor, Clifford Cunningham, who really had a beautiful interview. We really had a really robust dialogue, and looking forward to him serving with us. He has big shoes to fill, but I have no doubt that he'll be able to fulfill the duties of that role. I want to thank all the applicants that applied to be our City Council Clerk. I think that we make the best decision for what we're looking for right now. And so I want to congratulate Mr. Cunningham, and I move that we adopt this by a roll call.
Chair, roll call or roll? Yep, you have the floor, Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, I want to thank the former City Councilor for being interested in this position, and thank you for, if it's offered, to accept it. I just had a few questions regarding the conditions of disposition. I know it says 12 months that you have to be on probation, that he has to meet, and also, it says six months to enroll and complete this online parliamentary course. Was that something that was put in writing, or is that something that we're just voting on tonight? Was the candidate aware of this yet?
Of course.
Why didn't do the interviews?
I'm just wondering if we...
Yes, yes.
I'm wondering if we had this in writing prior to this...
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes.
Thank you. If you recall, Counselor Brown, or, to the chair, sorry. Our city solicitor had sent all of us an email asking, because there weren't a lot of people that had applied that were registered parliamentarians, that if they were, parliamentarians, that if they were to apply for this job, that they would have the option to apply for this course. And it's an option that the city solicitor offers to her own staff members. And it's a course on parliamentary procedure, and the catch is you have to pass within six months and with an average of C or higher. So that was something that was proposed to us by the city solicitor. In terms of the probationary period, that was something that we collectively decided because there was not a lot of people that had applied for the position, and we were kind of in a crunch. It was discussed with the candidate at the time of the interview, and so we discussed that in our Subcommittee when we spoke with Mr. Cunningham, and it was something that we all collectively agreed on.
Mr. Chairman, my, you know, I appreciate that statement, but my question is only simple. Did we have this in writing? Is this something that we need in writing prior to voting on? I just think, you know, when we have stuff like this, we should have, I mean, the candidate himself, whether he's the former City Council or current City Council, if he's going to take on the position, he should have it in writing. I think the job description, from what I read, covers this, but now that we have to vote on it, I'm just trying to figure out why are we voting on it if it's covered in the job description?
Mr. Chairman, I ask that we suspend the rules and check in with the city solicitor if there's any clarification that needs to be made?
All right.
And I just want to know if it's needed in writing.
Yes, it is.
So normally, what we would do in the HR department is take this, send an offer letter to Mr. Cunningham. We always say, subject to running a criminal record background also, which is just standard HR stuff, and we would put this, after you vote on it tonight, into the offer letter, and he could start working. I do think, since you're higher, the adoption of this is also basically a waiver of any residency if necessary.
So, if I can speak to the...
Go ahead. You have the floor.
So, we put it in afterwards. So, at this point, this is the first time the candidate is actually seeing this, that within six months, he or she needs to enroll. Is that correct?
No. Actually, during his interview, I believe, the committee that interviewed him...
It came up during the interview.
Yes, they hired him.
So it came up that it was a requirement?
That this was on the table, yes.
So then, why are we voting on it tonight, then?
Because we have to vote on it. It's coming out of committee.
To hire.
It calls for a vote to hire.
So, all right, so we don't need, at this point, we didn't need him to know this prior to this meeting?
No.
He knew by words, but not in...
He knew that if, during the interview process, that the condition of the employment would be the probationary period and the course. What he did not know is if all the councilors would have voted on this particular condition and the course. So tonight, the Council is also accepting these conditions for his employment. Once you accept them, we send them a formal offer letter from the HR department. We need the formal letter to set him up in auditing and payroll, and so that he has a piece of paper as to what's expected of him.
Does that satisfy your answer? Right?
Thank you.
Anyone else on the matter? Roll call. Seeing none, roll call. Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Judy Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Tenere Garcia?
Yes.
Hold on. You're voting on the whole package.
I'm voting on the appointment.
You can't interrupt the roll call, Leo.
Okay, no, that's fine. I'm voting on the appointment.
Counselor Lopez?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Recupero?
Yes.
Counselor Vidal?
Yes.
Counselor DeJesus. Absent Counselor Hattlerberg.
Yes.
Counselor Melinda Vega. Absent Counselor Taylor.
Yes.
Nine in favor and none opposed. Two absent. The new City Council Clerk has been appointed.
Congratulations.
Take a bow, Mr. Clifford.
Don't take a bow.
Next order, business?
Okay, under second readings, we have a resolution of, let's see, A, B, roll call votes. We have the Capital Improvement Resolution, introduced by Counselor Robinson. Whereas the city charter requires the annual adoption of a five-year capital improvement program, and whereas a capital improvement program is the integral component of the city's financial planning and a cornerstone for our quality of life, both of which foster the economic development necessary to expand our tax base and sustain the life of the community. Whereas a capital improvement program is necessary for the maintenance of it...
Okay, Counselor. Hattlerberg moves to waive the rest of the reading and adopt it on a roll call vote. Seeing no objections, a call for roll. Counselor Brown?
Yes, for the adoption.
Counselor Judy Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Tenere Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Lopez?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Ray Coopero? Counselor Vidal?
Yes.
Counselor DeJesus. Absent Counselor Hattlerberg. Counselor Melinda Vega. Absent Counselor Taylor.
Yes.
Nine in favor and none opposed. Two absent. Motion is adopted.
The next order requires eight votes. It's the Loan Order Capital Improvement Program, introduced by Counselor Robinson. Be it ordered that the various capital projects and equipment purchase shown under the heading of grant funding on the schedule attached, the schedule...
Chair recognizes Counselor Hattlerberg?
Waive the rest of the reading and call for a roll call vote on the adoption. Seeing no objections, so moved.
Counselor Brown?
Yes, for the adoption.
Counselor Judy Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Tenere Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Lopez?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Ray Coopero?
Yes.
Counselor Vidal?
Yes.
Counselor DeJesus. Absent Counselor Hattlerberg. Counselor Melinda Vega. Absent Counselor Taylor.
Yes.
Nine in favor and none opposed. Two absent. The CIP loan order is adopted.
The final one before you was the amendment to the linkage fee ordinance, introduced by Counselor Robinson.
I would ask to suspend the rules at this time and have the city solicitor explain the changes.
So just that, so that we're all on the same page, the City Council adopted a home rule petition seeking linkage fees on new developments over 25,000 square feet. The legislature approved the home rule petition in October. So about a month ago, the end of February, we adopted an ordinance. In between, the first time it came before you and when we finally adopted it, we found that the former City Council President and City Manager had negotiated little slight changes to the actual ordinance. So we want to bring those forth. So as you know, it's not a revolving fund, and the legislature did not adopt a revolving fund. So we have pending already a change in our zoning ordinance to delete the community impact fee, since we've changed now the fee to be named the linkage fee, the leakage fee fund. So in our ordinance, we need to change a couple of words to mirror the type of fund that we have and to just read better. And we also added a section about waiver and reduction, giving, based on City Manager's recommendation, the Council's authority to waive the actual linkage fee. So, everything pretty much stays the same, except for we've clarified the type of fund that the monies are going into. We kept all the same categories that the home rule petition adopted and the original ordinance adopted.
Counselor Haddelberg?
This from the committee we just had and adopted by roll call vote.
You want to amend the, want to amend that one word, Brian? Todd Taylor, you had a one-word amendment?
On section 467, delete the word, amend and put the word in add, add.
So moved, as amended. Okay, as amended. Todd Taylor. Todd Taylor.
We will have a roll call on the amendment, a yes to adopt the linkage fee as amended. Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Judy Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Taneri Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Lopez?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Ray Cooperrow?
Yes.
Counselor Vido?
Yes.
Counselor DeJesus, absent. Counselor Haddelberg? Counselor Melinda Vega, absent. And Counselor Taylor?
Yes.
Nine in favor and none opposed, two absent. That's all the second readings you have, Mr. Chairman. Move on to new business. We'll now move on to new business.
First order under new business, order introduced by Counsel Ray Cooperrow. Request that a subcommittee on conference be held to discuss the direction of the city council.
I'd like to adopt under suspension. There's no objection. I can speak on it.
Yeah, the floor, Counselor.
This order is just for our own, to understand, so we can explain where direction the city is going. We can talk to the city manag, to the city manager or the new city manager that comes in to let us know exactly what his intentions are, what he intends to do. And any counselor here can ask any question that he wishes, that he wants to ask him that might be important to him, or anything that we wish to ask him to see where the direction of the city. So, at least, we can have a basic idea. We all have a knowledge and idea of what's going on, but we would like to know more or less which way it's going, his, his view or what he intends more or less for the city.
Counsel Vido?
I don't have a problem with adopting this under suspension, but it is a very vague order. I think that we should set, I mean, it's a subcommittee to talk about the direction of the city, northwest, east, south. It's not clear enough as to what it is that we want to. Is it to, to come up with our priorities, some legislative priorities? I don't, is that something we should be having internal? I just have a bunch of questions about it. I'm not sure if we can maybe add something to make it a little bit more meaningful.
Are you looking to amend it? Counselor Taylor?
So, I think, um, I think that if Counselor Cooperrow would accept a friendly amendment regarding the, the, the council's priorities for the city, I think that, I think that would suffice to narrow that down to-
It's fine. Just get amended that way.
Who's on wants off on the amendment? Todd Taylor?
Can you clarify that, Mr. President?
Yep. Clerk will clarify the amendment.
The amendment reads that a subcommittee on conference be held to discuss the direction of the city of Chelsea, and the amendment would be for council priorities.
Okay.
Adopted under suspension. Next order introduced by Counselor Vido. Request that the city manager instructed Department of Public Works to paint the speed bump tables to make them distinguishable from the asphalt to promote public safety.
Chair recognizes Counsel Vido.
Move to adopt unanimity under suspension of there are no objections, and I'd like to speak on it very briefly.
Seeing no objections, you have the floor, Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's self-explanatory, I guess, because of the winter, a lot of the paint that's been on the, on the speed, well, they're not speed bumps anymore now, they're a table, so they're a little longer and flatter. But what happened with the snow is that the paint has worn off, and when you're driving, you can't tell the difference between what's the, the table and what's the, and so a lot of people are just accidentally hitting this, and it's, it's very dangerous. So, I understand that spring literally just started a week ago, but I do want to make sure that this becomes a priority because it is an issue of public safety. Thank you.
Counselor Taylor?
So, this is a, this is a problem also in my district. We have two, two new, uh, speed tables, uh, on Washington. And, um, I received some complaints about this very thing and, and engaged some of the citizens on, on, uh, the local Chelsea Facebook page. I did have a conversation with the DPW director and the acting city manager regarding this. And they said that they would try to get the paint, the regular paint down now, but they had to wait till it warms up to put the thermoplastic paint on. So that, I think that that's already in motion, but I, I agree, it's a, it's a, it's, especially for people on motorcycles, I guess, it's tough for, if you don't, if you don't see it. But all the more reason to go the speed limit, folks. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Next order of business?
Order introduced by Counsel Ray Cooperrow. Request that the city manager provide the city of Chelsea with an evacuation plan in case of an emergency. If there is one in place, please provide a copy.
Chair recognizes Counsel Cooperrow.
Adopt under suspension. There's no objection. I'd like to speak on it.
Seeing no objections, you have the floor, Counselor.
I, I think the city does have some type of plan in effect, but it's never been, nobody knows where it is. It's the invisible plan. So, let's make the invisible plan visible, so the people know where it is. And it's a good thing. Every other city has it. We should have it too. I know for an emergency, people run all over the place and there's no coordination. Everybody just wants to save themselves. But we should still have some type of plan where the, some people that don't know may follow it and can save themselves.
Thank you, Counselor. Next order of business?
Next order of business, order introduced by Counsel Ray Cooperrow. Request that the traffic and parking commission reconsider adding a stop sign at the corner of Hill Street and Essex Street.
Chair recognizes Counsel Cooperrow.
Adopt under suspension. I'd like to speak on it.
Seeing no objections, you have the floor, Counselor.
I've done this before. I don't know how the parking traffic commission works, but I live here. I live right in, around that area, and the people in that area, they have a stop sign on the opposite side. They have a stop sign on this side. But on the side where I'm saying to put one, they don't want to put it. I don't understand why. It says it causes a congestion. They gave me an answer that it causes a congestion. How would it cause a congestion? What it does is, it gets all cluttered up because cars get in front of the street and you can't go up. So if there's a stop sign, they would have to stop there, and then the people could go up the street. So it never made any sense to me why they denying a stop sign where it's needed, especially around Park Square, where it's really one of the most congested parts of the city. So I'm reintroducing, and I hope this time, I might be able to get a favorable decision towards the people of the city. Because if you live here and you see what you go through every day, you will appreciate where you can go up the street where you live, where you cannot if the people get in, they don't want to let you go by. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Next order of business?
Next order introduced by Counsel Ray Cooperrow. Order that the traffic and parking commission consider installing a speed bump in the middle of Essex Street between Shama Street and Lynn Street.
I'd like to adopt under suspension. I'd like to speak on it.
You have the floor, Counselor.
They denied this too. I don't understand why. There's a bus stop there. Children in the morning go there and get picked up. So, they have all these things. They put one on Arton Street, which is in my district, but they say we can't put one on Essex Street. Why can't you put one there when there's a bus stop? In the morning, the children get picked up. So, you, you don't care about the safety of children? Or, why is the reasoning? I can't understand the reasoning why they didn't put it there, but I'm resubmitting it again, and maybe this time, they will think of the safety of children and will apply one there. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Next order of business?
Order introduced by Counsel Ray Cooperrow. Request that traffic and parking commission reconsider installing a speed bump at the corner of Essex Street and Lynn Street after the stop sign.
Chair recognizes Counsel Cooperrow.
Adopt under suspension. I'd like to speak on it.
You have the floor, Counselor.
Okay. So, this is after the bus stop where the children are. There's a stop sign there. So after they stop, they speed down the street. They just go straight down the street. So now, if you put one in the middle, after the stop sign, you put in the middle of Essex Street, they won't be able to speed up no more. Because while they stop at the stop sign, boom, and they take off. Why can't, it's not unreasonable to ask to put one in the middle. I don't know why they keep denying it. I don't know why. What is it? Is it my district that you don't like my district? Or, what, what is the reasoning behind you not wanting to put one there when you put one on Arton Street? Why? Okay, now, Don Street, you're going to tell me, oh, that's the safety because the school is there. But I'm telling you to put one where the bus stop is, and you don't want to put it. So explain to me why you don't want to put it. I'd like to have an answer again. And if you don't, I will submit it again, and again, and again, and again. Because the safety of the children and the safety of the people that live there is very
Thank you, Counselor. Next order of business?
Order introduced by Counsel Ray Cooperrow. Request that the traffic and parking commission notify council with the actions taken during or prior to traffic and parking meeting to allow ample time for the council to review and make an informed decision.
I'd like to adopt under suspension. I'd like to speak on it.
Seeing no objections.
This one, I would object to your asking for clarification.
Okay.
This is what they send us every time they meet.
But they-
I don't want to ask them to, so unless I can understand what's going on here.
The-
So do you want me to clarify what I mean?
I, I will answer. The, all parking and traffic meetings are posted here in City Hall, and they're online. So if there's any business that any counselor has that they want to see at parking and traffic, and you have something on your agenda, you need to go and speak at the meeting or bring your residents up who are against it and speak at the meeting. We do get notification.
Well, can I have my explanation too, if it's possible?
Yeah, you can speak on the matter.
All right. Nobody's arguing what you're saying. The point is that sometimes they send it up way too late. They don't send you, they don't tell you something, they don't explain to you. They comes up to us and they say, vote on it. And you have no time, you say, oh, sometimes they wait a month to, to tell us what it is. I can tell you a prime example. They have a speed bump on Arton Street. It was done 10 years ago, or nine years ago, whenever it was, and they just installed it now. So, what, what I actually want is, when they come up and they tell us, okay, this is what you got, and we have time to, to act on it, not that it's just brought to you and say, well, vote on it. That's what I'm saying. They bring it up to you many times and say, well, vote on it right now. That's all I'm asking, to give us ample time for us to look at it. If that's so wrong to ask, then fine.
Chair recognizes Counsel Vido.
I think just, I think that what the council president, what I heard, was that when we submit something to traffic parking commission, we know it's coming up on the agenda, that we show up to that meeting to advocate for what it is that we want. I understand what my counselor, my brother counselor was saying in terms of, once the decisions are made and it comes to us, that we shouldn't have to vote for it on the fly. But if we're submitting something to the traffic parking commission, we should be proactive in making sure that we're seeing it through when it's on the agenda at that time. I do, I will also say that I have had situations where I have gone to the traffic parking commission, and I've spoken, and things didn't go in my favor. That's part of the fight, you know? And unfortunately, I understand, I understand what you're, what my brother counselor is saying, but I just think, there are a couple of things here that my brother counselor mentioned he put forth to the traffic parking commission that didn't go through. It sounds like maybe you should try a different channel by actually showing up to that traffic parking commission and doing, and if you would like an at-large counsel to be there with you, I'd be happy to join you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any other counsel on the matter? Counselor Brown?
I don't want to repeat what was just said, but I think the council also, if I could through the chair, needs to make a note with our clerk that when those, when those postings are available, he should get a copy of those postings, so he'll be available. He's stating it's too late when he gets it. And he's confusing, once we get it here, the meeting is already taking place, and we're only to accept or vote on what they've already done. So I think he should consider asking for meetings in advance.
Yes, and all, all boards are posted. So we need, they're online, and also, they're on the board across from the assessor's office. So they do notify the council when it, when it is, and then they send out what their results are.
Well, I, I asked, can be allowed to speak?
Yes, Counselor. We want you to be satisfied.
I could show you this. It was sent to me two weeks later.
But you missed the point.
Well, the point is that we should be, be notified faster than they do. They should, everything is posted. This was sent to me two weeks later.
Yeah, you missed-
I asked for that decision. What decision did you come across? Well, two weeks later, I got it. Why should we wait two weeks for a decision? Why they came across telling you, well, this is why you didn't get it? That's the point I'm trying to make. Why did they wait two weeks to send it to me?
And the point you're not hearing is the fact that the meetings are posted, and if you have business before the traffic commission, you should show up at the meeting and speak your piece. We do get after, after each meeting-
Well, they don't make the decision at that meeting.
Yes, they do.
Well, I, I've been there before, and they didn't make a decision at that particular time. They say, we will take it under consideration. Is that a decision? When someone says, we will take it under consideration, what does that mean?
That they made a decision to take it under consideration. All right.
Move on.
Next order of business?
Let it go.
What do you mean, let it go? What was your motion on that, Counselor? No. Huh? Suspension? No, no, he objected to it. Brian?
Yeah. Yeah.
Do you want a second reading? Object to the first reading?
No, no, just let it go. Just let it go. Let it go.
Just withdraw, just re, redraw your order. Yes. Just say you want to-
If you object to the suspension, there's a roll call. If you object to the first reading, it goes to a second reading. What are we doing?
We'll object to the, just for- Yeah, withdraw it. Just withdraw it. Take it away.
Thank you, Counselor.
Just take it away.
Next order of business?
Order introduced by Counsel Ray Cooperrow. Request that a subcommittee on conference be held to discuss how the employees of the City Hall can improve with providing friendly customer service when interacting with the public. What can the city council do to help? What training or resources can we provide to our employees to rectify this issue?
If I thought the suspension, if there's no objection, you'd like to speak on it?
See no objections. You have the floor, Counselor.
This is just- a lot of people have a hard time, especially when it comes, they wait in line so long, and maybe there should be some type of explanation to them to say, "Hey, you know, this is- you could probably help your way in a little easier." Because ever since they had that sticker pro- with the stickers, there was lines out the door and people been complaining and saying, "Hey, we get in- they're not giving us the correct information now. They're not doing this." So I was wondering if there's any way that their employees or whatever it is somewhere, they could be more caring and understanding toward these people, because a lot of them wait for hours and hours and that's the whole point, that maybe they could be more caring and understanding towards the people that come to City Hall.
Counselor Vado?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm also a fan of customer service, but this order almost implies that- that folks aren't providing it here. And I'll be the first one to call out a department if I don't feel that they're doing their due diligence. I think our City Hall employees are strapped. I think we continue to build and bring in more and more residents into the city, and each department is at absolute capacity, busting at the seams to the point that we can't even fit all of the departments in this building anymore. So I think that what I think that we should do is that when budget time comes, that maybe we have these conversations or that we figure out maybe department by department what we can do to maximize or build capacity in those departments. But I just- I'm not going to object because I do believe that there is a level. It does fall from- as a- from an outsider. For me, it's I'm not getting quality customer service. And it's not necessarily that it's the employee's fault. It's just that the person can't meet the need. So I'm not going to object to the order, but I do want to say for the record that I object with the language because it implies that folks are intentionally not providing customer service. But we do have an issue here in terms of the needs that we need to meet of our residents and our ability to do so with the amount of people that we have on staff.
Thank you. Counselor Taylor?
So I would also say, this has been kind of a pet peeve of mine. I agree with Counselor Vado when- usually when I come to City Hall, I don't see people being rude to the- to the, you know, to citizens coming in to do their business. I would say, however, that customer service is not the government's strong suit. And- and we should really- in fact, if people want to go back and watch last year's budget hearing, I asked for more funding for the Clerk's Office for this very reason. And the Clerk's Office is not the only department that needs more- need more people working there so they can- they can get the job load. So look, I think this is a legitimate source of irritation for people, the lack of- and it's not- it's not due to the employees. That's where I would offer a friendly amendment to reword this in order to improve- improve customer service by the city and leave out the employees part. I think- I think during the public speaking, we heard some examples of some of this stuff where the- where the city, you know, goes awry, and it really- it really is infuriating. I get calls constantly about stuff like this. And, you know, how can I- I got one today. So really, I think that- I think that there's a real issue about trying to sit down and figure out really how can we improve this process. I know that the sticker, you know, the kind of do it from home, do it online, didn't quite work out the way we really wanted it to. And sometimes it was our own fault and sometimes it was, I think, the fault of the system. But we need to improve. We need to learn from the process and do a better job. So I would ask the city, you know, let's- or I would be in favor of this- this order to sit down to try to figure some of this stuff out and at least, you know, get some input from the public and try to get this- try to get this solved.
Yeah, that's why it goes to Subcommittee so we can talk about it and understand, see what we can do.
Counselor?
Yeah, I understand.
So anyway, I hope you'll accept my friendly amendment. Thank you.
Actually, if I may, because it all relates back to the City Clerk's Office. I think it's kind of unfair to the City Clerk's Office that people had seven months to come in and get a sticker. And the law- it was online. I forgot you don't go online.
In this audit, it doesn't say City Clerk.
I'm talk-
Why do you specifically say City Clerk when it does not say it?
Because I want to mention the City Clerk. I have the- I have the right to say that.
Your own personal, right?
Yeah. Well, because pretty much what's going on relates to the City Clerk's Office.
There's many departments. There's no specific sticker that says City Clerk.
I have the floor, Counselor. So the clerks had lines and lines out in front, and that was partly because people waited to the last minute to come in and get stickers. They had seven months that they could have came to get stickers. So they owned some of it, not just in City Hall. There were nights when the Clerk's Office was supposed to close at four, they were here to six. On Tuesdays, when they're supposed to close at seven, they were here till nine. So they did their best to try to accommodate people. So the people need to be able to give a little bit to in order for us to be able to take care of business. One more thing.
Sorry. I did not mean to imply that the City Clerk's Office was directly responsible for this stuff. I really think that the people in there were really working their tails off to try to- try to make sure to get those lines down. But really, I think it's a more kind of structural thing that we need to address, not- that's why I said it's not the employees. And indeed, I will be the biggest advocate of personal responsibility in this situation where people do need to take the initiative and get their business done earlier. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next order of business?
Order introduced by Counselor Cooper. Requested the City Manager and Traffic and Parking Commission look into implementing handicap parking spaces in the Business District on Broadway.
Chair recognizes Counselor Cooper.
Adopt under suspension. If there's no objection, you'd like to speak on it?
You have the floor, Counselor.
I know, Dan. This is the actual fact. If you have a handicap sign, you could park anywhere in the city where there's a meter. That's a known fact. The problem is, is you go on the business side of Broadway, there's none for any handicap people. There's not even one spot to say this is a handicap spot. And it should- they should have at least one or two within the business area to have a handicap spot. And I don't know how to put it. I don't know how to say it, but I think handicap people that have- they should- because it doesn't guarantee them a spot. But if you have a handicap sign, it's more than likely that average people that don't have handicap signs won't park in that spot. And it secures some type of one spot at least for them, and they should have it. I don't understand why they never had one. They should have it. But that's my opinion, and I believe that they should have one. If they don't want to put one, they don't have to put one. But I believe that they should have at least a couple of handicap spots for handicapped people, even though, like I said earlier, a handicap sign gives you the right to park in any meter. That's not the issue. The issue is you should have a spot of his own that says handicap only.
Counselor Vado?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a handicap placard, and in- when I first started on the City Council, whenever we would have meetings, there's three handicap parking spots outside, and that always seemed to be ample for the needs at that time. But as we continue to invite more people to join our beautiful community, the truth of the matter is that you come during the day and those parking spots are already taken by staff. And so I understand what the counselor is saying. To think that our population would continue to grow, but that our handicap population won't, is just- is just not realistic. I would be- I would be in favor of us considering adding a couple more of handicap parking spaces, because as he says, though we are able to park on a regular meter, it still gives us a leg up to have an option- to have more handicap spots that are reserved for us if we needed it. So it just- it puts us in a situation where we're constantly driving around, and if you have mobility issues, then it's hard if you find a meter down the street to be able to get to where you're going. So I wouldn't be opposed to it, and I appreciate the counselor for considering a population that's often ignored. I also, while I'm on the topic, want to give a shout out to Kate Fox Lent and the DPW team, because for months I've fought, when we would have public meetings, that the handicap door on the ramp was always locked right before council meetings. But for the past few months while she's been in charge of DPW, it's always been open half an hour to an hour before the meetings. And so I just wanted to make sure I was- I would complain here, so I want to make sure that I'm tipping my hat off to them here as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Last order of business?
Order introduced by Counselor Vado, Counselor Taylor, and Counselor DeJesus. Requested the City Manager create funding for the City Council Office, Counselors and staff to enroll in a course of parliamentary rules.
Counselor Vado?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to adopt unanimity under suspension, and I'd like to speak on it, please.
You have the floor, Counselor.
Thank you. So I think for many of us who came onto the City Council and we didn't have the parli- who- I mean, the truth is that parliamentary rules is not something that's often taught in schools. And so when we come onto the City Council, you're learning so much about the city and the process. It's- I mean, we- I've got my Roberts Rules of Order, but technically, it's just not enough. It's just not enough for one to learn that on their own. This topic came up as we were looking for a City Council Clerk, and we thought that they should be a registered parliamentarian. If not, then we'll give them a training, and they have- as we stated earlier, the City Solicitor had recommended, as she does with her staff, that the City Council Clerk can take a course in parliamentary procedure and have to pass it with a C or average within six months. I thought it would make sense for any counselor that- or any person that gets elected to this body to also be armed with those same tools of information, so that it's- we're leveling the playing field. So that when we come here, we're informed with the tools that we need to be able to get business done. We have wasted a lot of time here on the City Council by either being misinformed or not being- or not being privy to how parliamentary process works in this setting. I think that if it's something that we set now, where we offer the training for us and even for the City- the administrative assistant to serve as a backup for the City Council Clerk, I think it's a great idea. And then moving forward for every City Council that comes in into City Hall, they could come in. And I just don't want there to be any impediment as to why someone shouldn't feel that they can represent their community. And if we're giving everyone the same tools and the same education to come here and be able to legislate, I just think it's a fair- it's a fair thing to do and a move in the right direction. So I hope that my counselors are okay with this and support this order.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other speakers on the matter? Calvin Brown?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just think this is weird. Most of us on the City Council, we got probably eight and a half years of City Council experience on this council. To be bringing this here to ask the city to pay for a course, I looked online today for web courses, $59, up to $100. You sign up for a web course on parliamentary rules and Roberts Rules of Law and Order. You have 30 days to complete. It's no more than $59 to $100. To ask the city to pay for this is not fair. It's- I mean, many times we have meetings, MMA, where we try to get council members to go out and learn different things that would help them, educate them on different things of city government. And some of us have went out, but many times, you know, we get a great number of councils to sign up, but they don't show up. So I think if this is something that we feel that we need, we should take a responsibility. We should show up as leaders and say, "Hey, I can do this. It's $59. It's $100. I can plug up on a website. I can do it. 30 days and I can complete it." That's why I was asking the question earlier about why are we asking folks to come in and do things that we haven't discussed or we haven't outlined in a profile of what we want? Yes, it would be great if an elected official get elected to the City Council or to the Board of School Committee. We give them a booklet that costs $29, which is the Robert Rule of Law book. I know when state representatives, and maybe my counselor can attest to this, when they get elected, they go out and they meet and they go over procedures. But a year and a half and eight and a half years later, for us to discuss about how important it is to have an understanding of government, 98% of us have that understanding. We talk about respect for City Hall employees and how we want them to offer. It's the way we dictate ourself. This is something that we can self-impose on ourself. And I just think, again, it's unfair to ask the city to pay for us to have an understanding of Robert Rules of Law when most of us know it. It's just basically, really basically, it's a formal step of how you do things. Tonight, guess what happened? There was an order read. Someone said, "What's the will of the council?" Someone said, "Accept it under suspension or motion to..." That's it. Then guess what happened? We have what we have now. Discussion, we're going to come to an agreement. At the end of the day, we're going to ask him, "Pull it out. Just can it. Just whatever he decides to do." We're going to ask him to do that. So that's Robert Rules of Law. We know it. We just have to continue to learn it and educate it and apply it with the body that we have here today. So I won't be voting in favor if it comes to a vote. I don't think it's necessary. I think if it is necessary for us to offer that to new council members, new school committee members, or any elected official, if we- but it's $29 a booklet. We're asking the city to foot us a bill for this. It's out of order. Thank you.
Counselor Taylor?
Wow. So I think this is probably the best money ever spent. If we can- we- with all due respect, I think that there has been an extreme lack of understanding of parliamentary procedure here at the City Council. And, you know, it's one thing when you have somebody who's actually running the meeting that abides by the rules of the council and by Roberts Rules, and the meetings run much, much smoother when that happens. When- when people start violating the rules from the chair, I think that's a big problem. I think that everybody, all of the counselors, really need an education about the procedure, about what their rights are as city counselors, and that, you know, if they don't agree with the ruling from the chair, there's ways to challenge the ruling of the chair. You know, we also need to learn that, you know, we're only allowed to speak when we have the floor and we're not really allowed to interrupt people when you don't have the floor. So I just think that this is a really good investment. It's an education for all the counselors. Some counselors have more experience with parliamentary procedure than others, and I think it does put everybody on a fair playing field. And I think everybody benefits, including the audience who had to sit through some of these meetings and were shocked and embarrassed by what was occurring. So I'd like to put an end to that. I think that this order is the first step in doing that, and I would encourage everybody to vote for it. Thank you.
Counselor Teneri?
Well, I've only been here for a year and a half, right? This is my first term, and I'm going to be honest with you. I- I still have a ton of questions, and I would love this. I understand my colleague, Calvin Brown, Counselor Brown, and you've been here for eight years. I have not. I'm sorry, more. But, you know, more than eight years, right? But I think that we can learn from this, and I definitely think we need it. Even though most of us know the rules, we don't put it into action, and we look sloppy. And I think that we are done looking sloppy, and I think we need to get it together, and I think this is our first step. So I will vote for it.
Counselor Drew Garcia?
Thank you, Mr. President. So I will say, I definitely commend my colleagues for introducing this and allowing us to fund and include resources here for colleagues. I do see both sides. I do hear from my colleague, Counselor Brown, here that it is also our personal responsibility, we've been here for eight years, to really act and seek the resources ourselves. And I'll take this opportunity to really give a big shout out to Paul Casino, our Council Clerk, who has been instrumental. I know what it was like to be here, to be seated right here and really taking notes while I'm hearing. And these are the true- these are the facts of what it takes to be an elected official. You run, you have a platform, you come here, you want to make the policy change, but you're also learning a new culture. You're learning the establishment, how things work, what the culture's like. You need to learn how to move things across. You know, you can- you can come up with all the policy that you want, but if you don't understand the procedure to get it done, then it's very difficult to do that. And Paul Casino, you've been so instrumental. You have so many years of wealth and knowledge that every time I had a question, you helped me. I would love to extend those sort of resources to the next generation of leaders who are going to be here in the next few months to take my seat. And I'd be happy to support any sort of resource that can help someone get a step ahead towards policy and moving things forward here, here in our city. So I'll be supporting.
Thank you. Any other speakers?
Can I just add something? I know I already spoke. I'll keep it short.
Please do.
I just want to say that I know that we- I've spoken with our acting City Manager about it, and there are different programs. And so the one that we would probably get for the council wouldn't be as extensive as the one that the City Council Clerk would get. It would be someone coming in. We save a bunch of money and we get the wholesale discount price, because they'll be training all of us at the same time. I just think- I just wanted to add that, that it wouldn't be a lot of money off the city in an investment.
I've had some conversations with the acting City Manager to look into doing a group session so that we all could be together. Maybe we can do some bonding at the same time, okay? We're all done.
Point to personal interest.
Please do.
I will. You don't have to tell me, please. I will. Last week, there was some misunderstanding of- I would like to clarify about the CPA. I asked about the CPA because I want to understand what the CPA is, exactly how it functions and how it doesn't function. And I- so people asked me questions, and I'm not going to answer any questions that I do not know what it is. I'm going to give you the answer, but I have to know what it is. So I asked for it for myself. It ended up being on the agenda. I don't know. And- but that's not- the issue is that I want to clarify. I'm not against the CPA. The only thing I'm is I'm interested to know how it functions. And I know how it functions, but I didn't know the intricate part, how it actually functions.
And I know how it functions, but I didn't know the intricate part, how it actually functions. And I don't know if all of us exactly know the intricate part of it. So I wanted to understand it and know what it was like, so when somebody asked me a question, I could explain. I wouldn't give them the wrong information, because I believe that as elected officials, when someone asks you something, you should be able to answer, and if you do not know how to answer them, you should be able to find out how to answer these questions. Because I don't believe that it's fair to anybody to give them an answer just to scrub them off, to say, "This is what it is." It shouldn't be. You should answer a question the way it was asked, and to make sure that you understand the question that was asked to you, and you can reply properly to what they ask you. So that was the whole thing with the CPA. I just wanted to clarify to my own self how it functioned and how it worked, and so I could answer questions, because I was asked questions like that. I was asked questions by senior citizens that was asking me, "Is there anything for senior citizen? Do they get, if they, they don't have it, could they pay it?" or whatever. So this was the whole thing. It's, again, as I, let me say it again. I'm not against the CPA. I was just asking information so I could clarify it when people ask me.
Thank you, councilor. Any public announcements? Counselor Vado.
This is a bit selfish, but I just really want to congratulate my daughter, who was accepted to the School for Ethics and Global Leadership, and she will be studying during her junior year in London. She was chosen from a really small, large pool of votes. So I want to congratulate my daughter, Nina Rosa, on all her accomplishments.
Thank you. Counselor Taylor.
So, as you all might know, I'm not really one for resolutions, so I did not offer one, but I just, during announcements, I wanted to point out that March was Irish-American Heritage Month. And so a shout out to all our Irish-American friends, including my wife, who was born on the north side of Dublin in Kulak. So thank you.
Thank you. Any moments of silence? I, I have one. Longtime Chelsea resident Billy Burke passed away. His funeral service was on Friday.
A moment of silence for the children. I'm involved in the school shooting today.
Counselor Brown.
Ollie, Ollie Malice, she lost one of her family members today. Prayers and thoughts with her.
Her mother, I believe. Anybody else? Prayers for those in Mississippi and Alabama that were hit by the tornado. And the kids who got killed in Tennessee tonight.
Six folks who got killed in the fire in Philadelphia.
Philadelphia.
Big fire.
Okay, thank you, councilor. Okay, thank you. See, no other business before this council. We are adjourned.